All right. Good evening. Well, to order the Bedford City Council regular council meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. And if you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Here.
Fluhardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Kochi?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Hey, council, you have the minutes of the work session of October fifth, two thousand and twenty. Any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks second by Miesak? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of October fifth, two thousand and twenty. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Rhodes, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And old business. Ordinance number ninety-eight seventeen dash twenty. Being an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-seven twenty-eight dash nineteen concerning section nine thirteen point oh-two sewer rates of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Miesak, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And a motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus. Frank, you want to handle this?
Yeah, for the three ordinances coming up, A, B, and C on our agenda, we have the sewer rate increases for two thousand and twenty-one. The senior citizen sewer rates and the water rates for two thousand and twenty-one also. There is no increase in the water rates for two thousand and twenty-one. However, the sewer rates, if you're doing the minimum right now from twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents will go up a dollar and two per month. So it'll go up to twenty-six forty-six and accordingly, four percent. If you're paying forty dollars a month, that'll go a dollar sixty and fifty a month, we go to two dollars. I ask that council pass all three of these ordinances this evening as we've gone through three readings and we'll be poised for our water line increases and cap improvements this year as well as our wastewater improvements that we have to do for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number ninety-eight eighteen dash twenty. Being an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-six thirty-seven dash eighteen concerning section nine thirteen point oh-three rate reduction for senior citizens and the permanently disabled of the codified ordinance of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Fluhardy. Frank discussed this, you want to elaborate some on this?
The increase on this is still four percent, but it's a difference of going up from seventeen dollars and eighty cents per month to eighteen dollars and fifty-two cents per month on the minimums, seventy-two cents per month increase. Again, it's in line with four percent that you're paying now for the increase for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety-eight nineteen dash twenty. An ordinance replacing ordinance number seventy-seven eighty dash zero five relating to water rates and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Fluhardy, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Saunders.
This one, mayor, this ordinance, we just wanted to get one out there. We haven't had one in a while to show where the rates were at. So I'm showing where they're not going up at all and it's being the same as we did last year. But I just wanted to get that out in the public so they see where we're at more current ordinances on the books.
And that's good, and all the rates are the same, so that's
That is correct.
That's good news. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, ordinance number ninety-eight twenty dash twenty. An ordinance amending section three fifty-one point one-eight truck parking in residential areas of the traffic code of the Bedford codified ordinances and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion, this is a, yes, we've already had two ra- readings. Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Fluhardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Janutus, second by Rhodes. Mike, you want this one?
Uh, yes, mayor, this is, we're making adjustments to some on-street parking. To be, to be specific, truck trailers, semi-trailers, recreational vehicles such as boats, travel trailers, motorhomes, campers, fifth-wheel trailers, et cetera, will not be permitted to be parked on the street. They'll still be able to be parked in residence yards, on hard surfaces, behind the front of the home. But they will not be allowed to be parked on-street as on-street parking except for the purposes that, you know, they're broken down or they're loading or unloading or they're providing a specific service.
Right. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And reports. City manager, Malice.
Thank you, mayor. A couple items, I just want to touch on one. Our leaf collection has started. I think over the next, you know, week or so, we're going to see more and more leaves coming down. We do have one box out there now. We're going to increase. We ask that residents, please rake your leaves and prepare them to the tree lawn for collection. But please do not put those in the street and blocking the catch basins and things of that nature. So we will make our way through the city, we'll make our way through more than once. You know, and we'll, like I said, that'll start picking up once they start falling more. I do want to share, and I've mentioned this in the, in the past, we are finalizing a large grant that's going to be submitted through OPWC, issue two funds. And this is going to be for a large Broadway project next year. That project, the grant will cover the replacement of the water line, which will cover from five points all the way down a little bit past Union Street. On top of that water line replacement, we're going to be looking at replacing curbs throughout the historic district and making numerous repairs to the electrical that has failed throughout the historic district. It's a substantial project. We will be putting in our grant application. We will be providing some matching dollars. We will be requesting some grant dollars and we will also be requesting some loan dollars through OPWC. So it's a substantial application. We're nearly completed. We hope to submit next week and the deadline's the fifth and we'll hear more in the coming months. We also submitted recently a Noaka grant and it is a planning grant, I believe I mentioned it at the last meeting, for our connector project, which would connect the historic district in downtown to the metro parks. And that will include going through bridge. Application reads very well. Have a presentation scheduled with Noaka on October thirtieth. Economic Development Office and specifically Jennifer Kupka. She's been putting in a lot of time with these applications and I just want to give her kudos. There's a lot of work that goes into that, so hopefully we have a positive outcome with those. I wanted to provide a quick update regarding our Willis Street lighting project. And that is funded partially through a NOPEC grant. We are tentatively scheduled to start installing those new fixtures along Willis and Taylor on October thirtieth. So the materials have come in, we're working with a contractor that's going to be performing that work. Should anything change, I'll provide council with an update, but we are tentatively scheduled to have that completed or started, excuse me, in a couple of weeks. Two other items, we did receive some plans. They are quite extensive plans from Dominion East, Ohio, specifically addressing main gas line replacements throughout the presidential district. There is miles of pipe that would be replaced. I think it's over three miles. That's substantial down residential streets. You know, I've said this, you know, Dominion is making its way almost through our entire town. Is it an inconvenience? Yes. It's a necessary inconvenience to have this infrastructure replaced. Nothing is scheduled right now. These are initial plans, we have to review them. But this project is coming and it's probably coming sooner than later. So as we learn more, we'll share with the public. But I do want to make everyone aware that there's a large project in that area. And lastly, just a reminder that Halloween in Bedford is scheduled. It's scheduled for the thirty-first from six to eight. All of those wishing to participate, you know, we've been putting out information and just, you know, save the information out for those passing out candy, for those trick-or-treating. It's online, it's on our social media. If you get a chance, take a look at that and most importantly, have fun for all the children. End of report.
Thank you. Law director, Montello. Yeah, you're muted, John.
Like to say hello to everybody. If anybody needs anything, don't hesitate to contact me. Everybody be safe and continue to act responsibly and hopefully we're almost through this COVID thing. End of report.
Thank you. Finance director, Gambosi.
Okay, three things tonight. Budget, we're going to have the council hearing starting October twenty-sixth. Two, tonight, and we have two ordinances on, we have the first one, I'm going to speak about them now. Ninety-eight twenty-three twenty, the appropriations of how we're going to be spending the third series of the coronavirus funding through the, from the state of Ohio, well, actually from the feds through the state of Ohio. And with so, we'll be utilizing the same process we did for number one with through the first responders and utilizing their expenses towards that. Also, we get into the appropriation ordinance that's there today. And in line with that, we have some special purchasing for the police department where they bought a, we have a sign that's going up, a school sign. We got a lawnmower we bought for our own this summer for the cutting of the grass. And we are going to have some substantial refunds this year of forty-five thousand added to our budget as well as some substantial numbers associated to the CARES program and grants. SEAL grant brought in another hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the city and as well as unforfeited funds of another two hundred and twelve thousand. So they've been quite busy. Also, we're going to be funding the full Bedford Board of Education demolition of Chanel. We have that in the budget of one point seven million. And Oakwood Forbes Road with the sharing of what we're doing for them, fifty thousand dollars. So I've already kind of addressed a couple of things coming up this, this evening. There's quite a bit that we were doing behind the scenes in the number crunching and getting ourselves poised for what's about to happen through this year and next year. So I'll ask council to pass those ordinances tonight. And and at this point, we'll be here reading through the two thousand and twenty-one budget very shortly. End of my report.
Yeah, Frank, you might want to clarify that one point seven million for Chanel, that we're not actually paying that.
We are not. We will be receiving the equal amount of funds and we did get a grant of three hundred thousand dollars from the Cowell County Land Bank for that also. So you're right, that is a pasture through the city, but we have to do the accounting for it.
Right, correct, thank you. Council. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. I just want to say hi to everybody and hope you're all doing well. This is a terrible thing that we're going through and it's extremely costly for the city of Bedford and and all, all the people. And I just feel really bad for, you know, all the people who have suffered through this. We've, we've had some significant losses in, in, in my own family regarding it and just hope that everyone hangs in there and somehow there's a silver lining is, is my whole. End of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fluhardy.
Thank you, mayor. I got something to ask. Mike, we still have some of these tree limbs on some of these tree, uh, tree lawns. Is there any way we can still get out there and pick some of these up so they don't have to sit out there all winter?
I will check to see if they're going around. They may be, I'm not sure, but I will check on that. The challenge is, I, I know we are, we have a couple of injuries and a couple of illnesses within the department. And once leaf picks up, it, things are, things are jamming. But let me, let me look into that. Do you know a specific area?
I have one for sure and it's a couple of big limbs itself. It's not the little ones, so where they really could just throw it in the back of a truck and pickup truck and take it in.
If you want, just send me an email tonight or tomorrow and I'll look into it.
Okay, because he must have thrown those out after the last pickup because I already had him on the list before, so.
Okay.
Anyhow, I'll get that address to you. Also, where's these, where's this company at that's supposed to be out here doing these sewers? In my ward.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry about that, my finger's sticking. They were out once already and I believe once I get the other schedule on the other streets, they'll be back.
Oh, okay, so they have started, I didn't see them.
Yeah.
Did they do Henry Street first?
I believe they were in a portion of Henry Street, but Henry's not completed.
Okay. And this, uh, voting we got coming up in Ellenwood, are we going to have any kind of police presence? Maybe a sheriff at the Ellenwood for that day?
Uh, we won't have a sheriff's present, but I believe we have auxiliary scheduled.
Because with all these different wards going over there, I think we need some kind of, might need some parking. Somebody, you know, direct something so people know where they're going. So I just want, I know that our next meeting's the night before and I didn't want to wait till the last minute because in case we had to do that. That's it, end of report.
Thank you. Mike, following up on Vic's chipper comment, you know, we've had a really nice weekend this past weekend and next weekend's supposed to be really nice. And I know people are still doing lawn cleanup and stuff or yard cleanup. Hopefully that chipper could, you know, provided we don't lose a lot of leaves all at once, but hopefully they can make a sweep before the end of the year. Because like Vic said, I've seen some limbs laying out here and there.
Okay.
Just hopefully we could do that. Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone, thank you for joining us. So first of all, you see my background. You might see these signs around Bedford in our downtown area currently, but I want to make an offer to any business in Bedford. If you would like one of these signs, Bedford Downtown Alliance would be happy to provide one for you. Leading up to Business Saturday, we will be doing a promotion online called Live Bedford, Love Bedford, Buy Bedford. I mentioned this at the last council meeting, but we're going to keep talking about it all the way through to Christmas. You'll see the banner over Broadway encouraging you to, if you live here in Bedford or if you love Bedford, consider buying Bedford. We're going to use that tagline online, you're going to see these signs everywhere. And if you like one of these signs, please email us at stories@bedforddowntown.org and we will have one of our volunteers get that to you as soon as possible. I would also like to thank everyone for First Fridays. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, our First Fridays are on hiatus for the winter and we will be back in March with March for Art. Just so you get an idea of how our First Fridays are going. At our last First Friday events, we passed two hundred meals and a hundred and fifty event bags. So thank you every, very much for everyone who supported us. We're looking forward to seeing you here. We are currently working on what next year is going to look like. Like everyone else, it's a little up in the air, but we are looking for volunteers to help us with planning those First Fridays. We need lead. One of these Fridays, you could take over, you can make it your thing and you will have help from all of us, but it can be your vision and, and idea. We are also starting the planning for the Chocolate Walk. For those of you who are not familiar with Chocolate Walk, this is an appropriate time of year to talk about it because it's really just trick-or-treating for grownups. We go from business to business picking up chocolate. And we need people to help plan that. If you're interested in helping, we'd love to have you. Chocolate Walk has sold out for the past two years. It's a very popular event and a lot of fun. So if you're looking to do with your downtown rack or downtime right now, we have all of those things that you can help with at the Bedford Downtown Alliance. If you have any questions, you'd like to learn more about the Bedford Downtown Alliance, please visit us at BedfordDowntown.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
Well, first off, anybody viewing this, obviously you can see me better because I've got a new computer. So that, that should help a little bit too. But I got a couple of quick things for Mike and to play off what Vic just said about the voting at Ellenwood. Is the work that's being done at Ellenwood's going to be done so that that parking lot is fully open? And we should move our vehicles out of that parking lot that day because a year ago, that parking lot wasn't enough to hold the cars. Now granted, that was just the municipal election, but at the same time, this is a national election. And even if sixty percent of the people vote online, that parking lot's going to be very tight.
We'll, we'll, we'll have that addressed.
Okay. I appreciate that.
We'll have our vehicles out, you know, the front beds, and I should have included that in my report, that's my apology. We did have, we did have a company come out and our arborist was out. We identified throughout all of our parks and some city properties, trees that needed to be elevated and taken out. Those front beds at Ellenwood, the majority of those trees were, were dead. And we actually took those trees out. We're working with a local company who's put together some designs for us. We're utilizing some of the remaining tree grant dollars. There was a little bit of money left for that, so we're going to utilize it. And we're working through right now redesigning that entrance point, entryway. But for it, all of that won't be completed, obviously, by Election Day, but we'll have it cleaned up and there'll be parking available. And we will make sure that, you know, our vehicles are relocated to accommodate as many of those coming to vote as possible.
All right, the next thing, which was, you mentioned, Mike, is the fact that they're basically going to be replacing every main in the presidential area here shortly. I saw the plans two years ago when they had them put together and it's going to be quite disruptive. But at the same time, that also happens to be the area where we have a lot of mature trees. The sidewalks are going to get disrupted. Hopefully, we look at staging that in such a way that we totally don't disrupt that whole area because it's going to make a dramatic change to that. Granted, they're tunneling it, but even tunneling it through an old area is going to be a little rough because they've got sewer lines that aren't necessarily from the houses at the proper depths either. So this is going to be a major project. Another quick thing, Turney Road, the gas company's currently working on that. They have, they have dug up the tree lawn on Turney Road in some areas right up against the road. I don't know if the gas company is aware of the fact that when Turney Road went in, it had a specialty base put under that pavement and the under drains were especially underdrained that went in and they're right up against the curb. So they had to have dug some of that stuff up. I hope they restore it to the proper substance that was there beforehand. They can't just fill in the hole and forget about it because that was all done as a specialty project that was done with federal money because that road had destroyed itself in less than twenty years beforehand. So when it was redone this time, it even has a reinforcing in the subbase. So I would hope that that gets restored properly. And another quick thing, do you know when they're going to replace the school zone sign in front of Old St. Mary's that was wiped out?
Yeah, I believe, Don, I believe, I believe that was ordered. We're actually going to be working to replace that. And John, I believe the individual was in court. Obviously, there's going to be possible restitution, but that's been ordered.
Yeah, well, that's a very expensive sign, but at the same time, without that sign there, people don't slow down for that school. Most of them don't even realize there's a school there, even with it flashing. So it's one of those areas that is critical that that sign goes back up. And then the last thing is, is Vic, I don't know if you noticed, but the sewer sign from the county was put up right in front of where the Statue of Mary used to be on the corner of Northfield and Union. That's the sign for that project. So
Oh.
It's sitting out there.
Yeah, I see it.
So I don't know if they put your name on it or not. Sometimes they put the council person in that ward up on it. So, but that sign is there, so obviously the project's been awarded and started. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Frank, did you have a comment?
Just to mention that the first item on the appropriation ordinance tonight will be for that sign, the police department. Uh, just to mention that the first item on the appropriation ordinance tonight will be for that sign, uh, Police Department 5,393.
Okay, but we're not paying that, I hope.
So. Have to appropriate it to K.
Okay, because we should get reimbursed for that. Thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Spinks.
Yes, um, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody is well. Um, today, this afternoon, at my church, the Church Nazarene, uh, we have partnered up with farmers for, uh, Farmers to Families. And they've donated a lot of food. It's fresh meat, it's dairy, it's fresh produce. Um, really excited. My church uh, also donated thirty boxes, I believe it was around thirty boxes. So Vic, we're gonna be delivering some really neat and good food tomorrow. So I have a feeling that uh, we're gonna have some extra things to deliver to our uh, resident, our, our people on the Milton Wills tomorrow. Vic, so sleep tight tonight so you'll have big muscles tomorrow and be rested. So that was real exciting. It will be going on again um, next Monday. It starts around three o'clock. And anybody can do it. Our church doesn't ask any questions. You're not asked for anything. You don't have to sign up. Um, if you're out and about and you need food for your family, um, you can show up Church Nazarene in the parking lot. And um, thanks, Mike, for getting someone out there to help because it got pretty congested. Uh, we have a lot of volunteers, um, making sure that these families are getting these big boxes. So uh, a shout out to Farmers to Families for, this is a great thing uh, going on during COVID right now. Uh, my church, Church Nazarene, will also be uh, next Saturday on Halloween. Be doing trunk or treat from six to eight, the same time as the city. And um, so we'll be passing out. It uh, if it, the weather is bad, we will cancel it. We will not move into uh, the church because of COVID. So um, you will have an option to be able to bring your children um, there in the parking lot of Church Nazarene. Um, my neighborhood, and I'm kinda challenged my whole ward um, to do something um, COVID safety and everything. So what I've come up with is I'll be, we're doing a football baseball kinda thing. So what we'll be doing is a lot of the residents, myself, will be dressed up. I'm gonna do baseball. And we'll have a spot, I'll have a spot in my driveway where when the kids come up, I'll be actually tossing um, the treats. I'll have different things, and so are neighbors. So we're having, some of the neighbors will be dressed up like baseball players. Some will be dressed up like football players. And so it's a six-foot thing. You don't have to get uh, clothes. And so it's kind of a fun way to celebrate um, Halloween and be in the six-foot district, uh, and the families can feel safe and secure or coming in. So if you're out and about, you can come down Grand Boulevard, and I'm challenging some of the other things to do that. Uh, some of my neighbors are high-risk, so this was, they thought it was a good idea to do that. So uh, my uh, next door, one of my next-door neighbors is a big Indian fan, so she's, we're gonna be doing the baseball thing. So uh, that's just kind of a hint to everybody. There's very, there's safe ways to do this um, for trick or treating. To keep everybody safe. That way, the things that we're throwing out, the parents will be able to wipe them off. They won't be coming up and ringing the doorbell. Um, they'll be staying at a safe distance. So that's what's gonna be going on around uh, Ward One on Halloween. And um, Mike, I had, no, I had talked to you, I think it was last week, about the big call, uh, car haulers on the end of Broadway there that are unloading in front of the fire hydrant. But where they're unloading, it is so difficult to get out from Grand onto Broadway. And the other day, they had two. I got a bunch of complaints about it. One lady said she, she doesn't know how she didn't get hit. The car went up over all costs from uh, uh, the Volkswagen place and everything. But it's just been getting worse and worse, and they're not only unloading the air on Broadway, but they're also loading on Grand at the same time. So it's hard getting in and out of there, and it's just progressively got worse over the last couple of weeks. So I don't know if you had said something or something. If you did, they're, they're not paying attention to you because they're still doing it.
Um, you're, you're not referring to, to Ganley. You're referring to the place across the street, right?
Yeah, uh, North Coast or whatever it is, the used car lot. No, not Ganley. It's a used car lot that's right there on the corner of uh, uh, Grand and Broadway.
And they know they're not, they know they're not permitted to unload on Grand, so I'll, we'll, we'll have a conversation with them.
Yeah. And like I say, with them unloading right there in front of that, it's, you, you know, that curve's a bad place right there anyway. So it makes it very difficult um, to see that. Uh, next thing is, thank you, thank you to the Bedford Police Officers that have been out and writing those tickets. Um, they've made their presence shown all over. I saw one um, on Broadway today too. And it's just, it's so important to, to get that message out, especially with kids are, are, you know, home, or, or at home a lot now right there, and they're getting out on their little breaks. They're on their bicycles. They're out when the weather and stuff. It's just, it's a big message to send out. Don't put our kids' life and our older people and our people that are walking, don't put their life in danger because you're so in a hurry to get somewhere, that you're flying down these side streets and stuff. So get that message out there. You come through Bedford, you're gonna get a ticket if you're speeding. So I like the fact that they're, that they're doing that, and it's just, I think it's real important. You should never be fearful of crossing the street, walking your dog or your kid, playing on your bicycle because, because someone, you know, thinks that their time's more important than yours. And they come down these side streets going sixty miles an hour and don't stop at stop signs. Well, I saw them out last week and saw them writing tickets, so I appreciate that. And um, I hope everybody has a safe and happy Halloween and uh, end of report.
Thank you. Again, I just would also like to wish everybody have a, a happy and fun Halloween and uh, be safe and keep your distances. But let's have fun for the kids too. All right, let's get on to business.
Hey, oh.
You forgot.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I.
I'll reach, I'll reach over and tap you on the head.
I, I apologize.
That's all right. Actually, I have a few things, but um, I just wanna uh, say, stay with Sandy said about this speeding. But it wasn't even in my ward because I was up on Columbus Road Saturday. You could have made a mint on that street Saturday. People are rude. They just fly by. I tried to get across Columbus Saturday to go to a private driveway, and I took my life into my hands. I says, I can't walk fast. Well, I'll tell you what, I learned how to walk real fast that day. The other thing I wanted to say was welcome to the, we just brought on board a brand-new auxiliary young lady. Uh, Angela from our water department was on duty Saturday, showing her the ropes and bringing her through our areas. And I just wanna wish her luck and say thank you for signing up with our auxiliary. If she, if she has any problems, she can see any one of us. We can help her. We'll give her the ropes if we have to. We can help her get through the, our areas. Um, also, um, as a private citizen and a former member of the Board of Elections that I did learn a lot of uh, things from. They're still looking for volunteer, not volunteers, paid people, people that will get paid to work at the polls. It's a long day. It's gonna be at least twenty hours, if not longer at this time. Normally, it's fifteen. But they are still looking for places to put uh, registered voters that are willing to share their time to work the election this year. Uh, mostly this message is those that voted by mail already or planning to do that. Um, you should be able to, it's a new step. You can track your vote now. And before you even put your mind at rest, once you get your ballot in, whether you drop it off or mail it in, you can call down there to see if it's been accepted and it's ready to be processed on the night of election. Uh, I had that brought to my attention the other day by talking to a couple of people that we used to work together downtown back in the day in the seventies, but it wasn't that far away. And uh, we um, we just kinda expressed our thoughts about the election. Uh, my other thing is, um, you know, our Halloween is six to eight. I am planning, and I've had many people inquire as to if we're having it, and I told them yes. I'm going, we have a lot of drive-throughs, so it won't be too hard to handle. But most of the items I'm gonna give to the children will be in a plastic bag, like we did for the drive-through on Fourth of July weekend. And it, Sandy tossed really good. I tossed fairly well, but we got the candy over to the kids or whatever we were giving out that day, and hopefully it'll work out for us, and we'll be safe again. Uh, the uh, that, and as far as Don's inquiry, the la, last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they finished the gas lines on Turney at the corner that you were probably talking about. We, I got to look inside the hole where they did the connection, but they did have a full-time officer when they were transferring the gas at the corner of Turney Road. Uh, the hole wasn't completely filled, but I don't, I believe they worked yesterday, Saturday, and they finished, completed the job. Hopefully, it went the way you, you expected it to be done. They did do a good job. Everybody was very pleased. Nobody complained about their yard. And I believe most of the gas was transferred properly, and hopefully they will. I do have a question of inquiry. Um, Union Street, what are they planning on correcting all the washboard road uh, in the near future? What they're gonna do with it? Asphalted or what? And that was my other question. Union Street, what are they gonna, when are they gonna start, and what will it be? Asphalt or cement?
It'll be a complete resurface of the roadway, but I don't have the plans as of right now. They have not submitted those plans to us. It's a county road.
Okay.
They have that done next year.
Okay. That's what I said, next year, once we get through with the budgets. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Sorry, Paula.
No problem.
Okay, now we can get on with business. Uh, ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-three dash twenty. Ordinance appropriating the city's coronavirus relief fund payment received pursuant to amended sub, substitute House Bill four eighty-one to the city's COVID-nineteen response and directing the city manager to declare a proclamation. Uh, motion for suspension. A Fleuharty, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. I, Saunders, second by Spinks.
I addressed this a little earlier, but as we had first and second round of funding from the uh, coronavirus for the city, for first responders, uh, this will be our third uh, disbursement that we will be documenting as to how we'll be spending those funds. And I ask council to approve that this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Right. Ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-four dash twenty. And ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-seven thirty-eight dash nineteen, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year twenty-twenty and declaring an emergency. Again, a motion for suspension. A vote second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Fleuharty.
Again, with this ordinance, we touched on it earlier. Uh, we have a lot of adjustments in regards to the coronavirus funding. Uh, we did have quite a few, uh, four grants that are affected that we have to reappropriate, one being the NOPEC Energy uh, grant that we have that we're using Gardner for. And also, we had the uh, Oakwood Forbes Road, the um, and the SEAL uh, funds for both the grant and the unforfeited funds. Ask council to approve that this evening to uh, clean up our, our finances, uh, and get those prepared for uh, year-end.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-five dash twenty. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement, Kihaug County Board of Health, and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Fleuharty, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Saunders. Um, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual uh, contract with the Kihaug County Board of Health. We work with them. Obviously, they provide a number of services uh, for our city, uh, for our businesses and residents. Um, obviously, this year, they've had uh, a challenging year. Uh, they've done a number of case management studies. Um, they've had, um, they've supported the schools. They've supported um, with um, you know, updates regarding the pandemic and call, call center lines. Uh, but on top of that, we work with a gentleman that's um, comes right out to Bedford uh, when we have inquiries or concerns over housing issues, concerns over business issues. There's, they're always very, very responding. Um, responsive, my apologies. Um, there, this fee, it's, it has gone up over the last couple of years, as we discussed in work session. Uh, it's roughly seventy-one thousand dollars. This is an annual uh, contract, and it would run through December of twenty-twenty-one. Um, it is based on our twenty-ten census information and a per capita dollar based off of uh, population of over fourteen thousand people.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-six dash twelve. Twelve, that's twenty. Was written uh, twelve on my paper here, but on the, on the agenda, it is twenty. Ninety-eight twenty-six dash twenty. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to sell the nineteen ninety-six Pierce Quantum Pumper, declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fleuharty? Fleuharty? Miesak?
Yes.
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Fleuharty. Um, Mike?
Yes, this is in regards to the engine, the fire engine that we recently replaced with the purchase of the new one. Um, we did have this online um, under a site that we've used frequently for a number, for a number of our vehicles. Um, through GovDeals, do pay a small portion. Um, towards that site, we were um, unlucky in our attempt to sell this vehicle. Uh, we did have a couple of neighboring communities come out and take a look at it. Ultimately, they decided to go in another direction. Um, before, we did look at uh, working with a broker. Brokerage firms charge up- charge upwards of ten percent. Um, we did recently look at some comps. There were some comps of similar vehicles that have sold for roughly twenty-nine thousand dollars and won just over thirty. Um, we did have this organization, which is a training organization, contact us. Um, and based on their offer, um, it's our recommendation, we sell this uh, payment to them. Um, if we would choose to hold on to it, we would need to look at um, obviously, finding a place for, to store it indoors, to preserve it. Until we did sell it, obviously, there would probably be some type of cost associated with that. Um, and if we did start working with a broker, that comes into uh, play the brokerage fees. Um, the offer here, we would not be um, we would not be responsible for any brokerage fees. And we believe it's close to the going rate for these um, and we recommend, obviously, um, selling it.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Um, we're gonna get into the hearing of citizens. And if you wanna make a comment, please uh, email citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Uh, before I get into any questions, uh, we have Ms. Darlene Davis from the Bedford Library. And she would like to speak to us. And uh, Ms. Davis, welcome. We, we miss when we're having our uh, library people come in and give us uh, monthly updates and uh,
I know, I know.
I know. So it's really good to see you here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
So I will turn the floor over to you right now.
All right. First of all, I wanna say hello to everyone. I thank the mayor, Kochi, and uh, city manager, Mike Malice, for allowing me to speak with everyone tonight. I just wanted to inform the residents that the library has issue seventy on the ballot. Uh, just to inform the resident that this is a um, first request for us since two thousand and eight. And uh, it is just a continuing levy. And the levy will allow us to continue to operate all twenty-seven of our branches, keep our evening hours and our weekend hours and maintain some of the programming that we do for the city as far as the homework center. And uh, to make updates for safety and security and some of the other things that the library has to do to maintain the critical services that we offer to the community. And what does it mean if it fails? It means that uh, we'll probably have fewer hours of operation for the library. Um, for those who aren't aware, the library is back open. We are offering curbside service for the residents. Should they not feel safe to come into the branch? Uh, we are requiring the mask and operating at a fourth of our capacity at this time. So I just wanted to be able to share that with everyone. And also point out that the library for the, uh, in September, we had a produce distribution. And we're gonna be having another one, our second one, on uh, Wednesday this week from one to three for the residents as well, uh, with the food bank. So that'll be from one to three here at the branch uh, over on Columbus Road at the Bedford Southeast Branch. And again, I just want the residents to support the library. Keep us in mind, we go to the, to the polls on November third for issue seventy. Uh, any questions or concerns about uh, the levy, you can go to kiahoganlibrary.org and then uh, slash issue seventy. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening and stay safe.
Hey, Ms. Davis, thank you for being here. And uh,
Thank you.
That is an important uh, issue. And uh, we appreciate you sharing that with us. And we look forward to when uh, you can actually come here and we can see you in person.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it. Thank you all. Thank you again for having me.
All right. Good night.
All right. Have a good evening.
And uh, Mike, you have any comments? You're muted.
Uh, we have not received any comments um, throughout today, throughout day today uh, or this evening. Um, and I just recently checked it as well.
Okay. And just a reminder to people, they could uh, email that citymanager@bedfordoh.gov anytime. And uh, I mean, if it's a specific question, you need an answer right away, obviously state that. If it's something you want read at council meeting, also put that in your comment too. So we know, uh, cuz if it's urgent, we wanna take care of it right away. And we'll give a couple of minutes and uh, I guess I hope everybody has a safe and happy Halloween. Uh, social distance. Uh, we've heard a couple of creative ways just to toss out the candy so you're not touching. Uh, I know it's not like it was. Nothing's like it was. So uh, we'll just have to do things in a, a new and different way and uh, make the best of it. And go out and get some good candy. I know the dentists, the dentists are real happy with all the candy. Uh, but bad joke. Don?
Just wanted to say, I wanna thank the neighborhoods that, and then the different houses that really decorated this year. It seems like they've really increased in uh, what they normally do, which has really helped out in some of the neighborhoods. Cuz I've seen parents driving their kids around the neighborhoods just to see the decorations that are out there. It's not just Christmas time that they decorate. Halloween happens to be the second most decorated holiday in this country. So uh, keep driving around and uh, seeing what the different aspects are all over in all the neighborhoods. It's just good to see how people have taken to heart the fact that people are cooped up and it gives them an outlet to the, get out and about for a little bit.
A good point. Yeah, I've seen a lot of stuff uh, like we, during this COVID, we'd take my mom out for a ride so we can get her out of the house. And she enjoys looking at all that. And uh, we've noticed, like you said, a lot, a lot of uh, Halloween decorations out. Some houses are really spectacular here. And uh, although we travel all over northeast Ohio, so.
Mine's not done yet, so.
Mike, we get anything? All right.
Well, one at this time.
Okay. Well, then we will entertain a uh, motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, council, thank you for being here and all of you listening and watching. And have a good night. Thank you.